Thank you and welcome to the Mesa City Council Meeting for January the 7th. We will begin our meeting with an invocation offered by Pastor Jared Moore of the Trinity Church of Mesa, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand and remain standing for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we acknowledge that every good gift comes from you. And we take just a moment to thank you for this new year and all the expectations that we have with it. We're just excited to see what this new year brings to this community. Tonight, I pray for our political leaders of our community. Lord, guide them. And I pray that they'll govern according to truth. And then I pray that you'll give them hearts of justice and righteousness. So I pray that Jesus, that your love will come near to them. Holy Spirit, you'll rest upon them. And Heavenly Father, I pray that your mercies will be new to them today. I do thank you for each council member, and we thank you for our mayor. So give him guidance and discernment and direction. And we know that this is such a wonderful and special place to live. So thank you for each person that desires to make this city the best it can be. So give us pure motives as we serve these incredible people here, the residents of Mesa, Arizona. And so, Lord, we ask that you would provide for our needs tonight. Help us to walk in your path. We honor and we praise your name. It's because of your Son, Jesus, that all things are possible. And we ask it in his name. Amen. And amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, for helping us get off to a good start today. First item on our agenda is awards and recognitions. And I believe, Mr. Thompson, you have someone you'd like to recognize?
Yes, I would, Mayor. Thank you. I'd like to recognize Michael Troop. He's with Mesa Leadership Class this year, Michael, who's standing up. He's shadowing me today, learning the ins and outs of what it takes to be a council member. So, Michael, thank you.
Thank you. The next, under awards and recognitions, I'd also, I think it's important that we note that today is the end of an era, to some extent. This is our council member, Chris Glover,'s last formal council meeting. Mr. Glover has served very admirably on this council for eight years. During that period of time, he's served as our vice mayor. He's represented us very admirably on a lot of very significant assignments, including the Valley Metro assignment. And he's been a leader, not just here in our community, but nationally, serving in leadership position with the National League of Cities and representing our city really in a very positive way. So, Chris, I just want you to know, on behalf of a grateful city, we truly appreciate the perspective that you brought. Chris, as many of you might know, was the youngest person ever to be elected to the Mesa City Council. I believe you started your service at the age of 23, which is very remarkable. And that was, I think, a real asset for our community, to have somebody with, that doesn't look like, have this amount of gray hair, maybe. So he's brought a very fresh perspective and a real, as a native of this community, a real love for this community to his service. So we're very grateful. There will be a formal meeting tomorrow where the city will honor Chris and express our appreciation for him. But given that this is the last council meeting where you'll be participating, it's particularly important that we acknowledge your tremendous service and wish you well in your future efforts, Chris. And I think it'd be appropriate, if we could, I'm gonna invite Melissa forward. Let's, if you, council, if you'll huddle together here, let's move our chairs back. Let's take a photograph so that we can post this on social media and just continue to tell the story of Chris's service over the last eight years. So, let's see if we can all huddle in. Right here. There we go. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Luna.
So I want to thank Chris for his support over these past five years. We've become good friends. The best part about Chris is that he speaks fluent Spanish. So when I first came onto council, it was great having somebody that was bilingual, that we could talk, we could share stories, and we continue to do that today. And we have a lot of great things in common, and I'm gonna miss you, Chris, but we're gonna be, we're gonna remain friends forever. So, muchas gracias amigo.
Mayor, I was gonna ask Chris how many hair he has lost, because he's down, he shaves his head. However, I've enjoyed getting to know him. I've known his family for quite a few years. And just being able to work with a great person, I appreciate his friendship, also his demeanor and his forthright, willing to work with his constituents. And anyway, resolving issues in our community is very important as we move forward. So again, I, Chris, I appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, and to me, the thing that Chris brought perspective to this assignment, because he's literally lived in this district his whole life. So every neighborhood and every empty lot and every building, you know, Chris knew that intimately. He knew he could tell you what was there, you know, 20 years ago. And he can, he knows the people in his district extremely well. So he's done a great job of representing them. And again, Chris, you'll be sorely missed, but we certainly appreciate your tremendous service to the city. Going forward with our meeting, then, the first item on our agenda is to take action on the consent agenda. And we'd invite Mr. Kevin Christopher to come forward to read the consent agenda. Kevin, I can tell you already that we have cards on agenda items 5E, 5B, and 5D. So we'll take 5B, D, and E off of the consent agenda.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. These are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. If a citizen wants an item removed, a blue card must be completed and given to the city clerk prior to the council's vote on the consent agenda. Item 2, approval of minutes of previous meetings as written. Item 3A, Act on Liquor License Application for 4 Project 25 Incorporated, one-day event, Saturday, January 19th, 922 South Country Club Drive. Item 3B, Act on Liquor License Application for Campbell's Crew Cares, one-day event, Friday, February 22nd, 4863 East Falcon Drive. Item 3C, Act on Liquor License Application for St. Timothy Catholic Church, one-day event, Friday, January 25th, 1730 West Guadalupe Road. Item 3D, Act on Liquor License Application for El Atentico, 1245 West Guadalupe Road. Item 3E, Act on Liquor License Application for Fushen House Incorporated, 1440 South Country Club Drive. Item 4A, Act on One-Year Renewal, with a one-year renewal option to the term contract for bus, shelter, maintenance, and repair services for the Transit Services Department. Item 4B, Act on Six-Month Renewal and Dollar Limit Increase to the Term Contract for Emergency Medical Supplies for the Mesa Fire and Medical Department. Item 4C, Act on Ratification of the Emergency Purchase for the Presidential Rally as requested by the Police Department. The emergency purchase provided parking and security services related to the rally held at Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport, October 19th, 2018. Item 4D, Act on Three-Year Term Contract with Two Years of Renewal Options for Dump Truck Services with Operators for the Transportation Department. This purchase is funded by the local streets fund. Item 4E, Act on Dollar Limit Increase to the Term Contract for Custodial Services for the Parks Recreation and Community Facilities Department. Item 4F, Act on Three-Year Term Contract with Two Years of Renewal Options for Boiler and Tankless Heater Preventative Maintenance and Repair Services for the Parks Recreation and Community Facilities Department. Item 4G, Act on Dollar Limit Increase for Year Three and Six-Month Renewal to the Term Contract for Playground and Park Equipment for the Parks Recreation and Community Facilities Department. Item 4H, Act on One-Year Renewal to the Term Contract for Class 250 Residential Gas Meters for the Materials and Supply Warehouse for the Energy Resources Department. Item 4I, Act on Contract for Purchase of Six Replacement Vehicles, Including One Sedan, Two Light Duty Pickup Trucks, Two Minivans, and One Sport Utility Vehicle, as requested by the Fleet Services Department for the Police Department. Item 4J, Act on One-Year Renewal to the Term Contract for Rodder, Vacuum, Sewer, Truck Parts and Services for the Fleet Services Department. Item 4K, Act on Contract to Purchase of Replacement Hardware, Software, and Services to Upgrade the Audio-Visual Systems for the Municipal Court, as requested by the Information Technology Department. This purchase is funded by Municipal Court Restricted Program Funds. Item 4L, Act on Three-Year Term Contract with Two Years of Renewal Options for C-Cure Security and Closed-Circuit Television Parts, Services, and Licensing for Various City Departments, as requested by the Police Department. Item 4M, Act on Dollar Limit Increase to the Term Contract for Emergency Electric Line Crew Services for the Energy Resources Department. Item 4N, Act on One-Year Term Contract with Two Years of Renewal Options for LED Streetlight Fixtures for the Transportation Department. This purchase is funded by the Local Streets Fund. Item 4O, Act on One-Year Term Contract with Two Years of Renewal Options for Job Order and Master Contractor Natural Gas Construction Services. Item 4P, Act on One-Year Term Contract with Two Years of Renewal Options for Two Master Job Order Contracts for Transportation and Construction Services. Item 5A, Act on Resolution Endorsing Creation of the Hillview Irrigation Water Delivery District, that is generally bounded by East Brown Road on the north, East Fairfield Street on the south, North Harris Drive on the west, and North Forest on the east. Final designation of the district is determined by the AmeriCopa County Board of Supervisors. Item 5B has been removed from consent agenda. Item 5C, Act on Resolution Approving and Authorizing the City Manager to Enter into the First Amendment to the Amended and Restated Transportation Project Advance Agreement with Valley Metro, the City of Phoenix, and the AmeriCopa Association of Governments. This amendment provides the city authority to use city transportation funds to advance funding to Metro to complete the Gilbert Road Light Rail Extension. Item 5D and Item 5E have both been removed from consent agenda. Item 5F, Act on Resolution Requesting Approval for Staff to Continue Negotiations to Acquire Certain Property Along Southern Avenue and Stapley Drive Intersection Improvement Project. In order to avoid construction delays, authorizing and directing staff that fee title, easements, or other interests in and possession of certain property be acquired by the City of Mesa through eminent domain as a matter of public necessity. Item 6A, Act to Accept the City's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the Fiscal Year ended June 30th, 2018. Item 7A, Introduction of Ordinance Regarding ZON 18-00246, within the 400 and 500 blocks of North Center Street on the east side, and within the 400 and 500 blocks of North Pima, North Lewis, and North Sarin, both sides, and within the 500 block of North Pasadena, north of 526 North Pasadena, on both sides. This is located east of Center Street and north of University Drive, a rezone to establish a zoning designation that reflects the historic development pattern of the area. Item 7B, Introduction of Ordinance Regarding ZON 18-00688, within the 2100 to 2400 block of South Signal Butte Road, located south of Baseline Road on the east side of Signal Butte. Rezone and site plan review to allow for an attached single residence subdivision. Item 7C, Introduction of Ordinance Regarding ZON 18-00692, within the 1,000 block of East University Drive, located west of Stapley Drive, on the north side of University Drive. This is a rezone to allow for residential development. Item 7D, Introduction of Ordinance Regarding ZON 18-00693, within the 2,800 to 2,900 blocks of South Hawes Road, and the 8,400 block of East Guadalupe Road, located at the southeast corner of Guadalupe Road and Hawes Road. Rezone and site plan review to allow for a multi-residential development. Item 7E has been continued to the March 18th, 2019 city council meeting. Item 8A, Act on Ordinance Regarding ZON 18-00592, within the 10,200 and 10,300 blocks of East Hampton Avenue, south side. This is located north of US 60 and east of Prisman Road. Rezone, site plan review, and council use permit to allow for development of a medical, commercial, and residential mixed-use campus. Item 8B, Act on Ordinance Amending Title 8, Chapter 6, Sections 5 through 18 of the Mesa City Code, relating to public nuisances, property maintenance, and neighborhood preservation. The changes impact the service of citations and will take effect 30 days after adoption. Item 8C, Act on Ordinance Amending the Mesa City Code, Title 4, Building Regulations, Chapter 1, Mesa Administrative Code, Sections 1 and 2, by adopting the 2018 Mesa Building Code, Residential Code, Mechanical Code, Plumbing Code, Fuel-Gas Code, Energy Conservation Code, Existing Building Code, Swimming Pool and Spa Code, and the 2017 Mesa Electric Code with amendments. Item 8D, Act on Ordinance Repealing the Existing Title 4 Building Regulations, Chapter 2, Mesa Building Code, Sections 1, International Building Code adopted, and 2 penalty clauses of the Mesa City Code. Adopting the 2018 International Building Code by reference, adopting amendments to certain provisions in the 2018 International Building Code, and adding a new Title 4, Chapter 2, Sections 1 and 2. Item 8E, Act on Ordinance Repealing the Existing Title 4 Building Regulations, Chapter 3, Mesa Residential Code, Sections 1, International Residential Code adopted, and 2 penalty clauses of the Mesa City Code. Adopting the 2018 International Residential Code by reference, adopting amendments to certain provisions in the 2018 International Building Code, and adding a new Title 4, Chapter 3, Sections 1 and 2. Item 8F, Act on Ordinance Repealing the Existing Title 4 Building Regulations, Chapter 4, Mesa Electrical Code, Sections 2, National Electric Code adopted, and 3 penalty clauses of the Mesa City Code. Adopting the 2017 National Electric Code by reference, adopting amendments to certain provisions in the 2017 National Electric Code, and adding a new Title 4, Chapter 3, Sections 1 and 2. Item 8F, Act on Ordinance Repealing the Existing Title 4 Building Regulations, Chapter 4, Mesa Electrical Code, Sections 2, National Electric Code adopted, and 3 penalty clauses of the Mesa City Code. Adopting the 2017 National Electric Code by reference, adopting amendments to certain provisions in the 2017 National Electric Code, and adding a new Title 4, Chapter 3, Sections 1 and 3. Item 8G, Act on Ordinance Repealing the Existing Title 4 Building Regulations, Chapter 5, Mesa Plumbing Code, Sections 1, International Plumbing Code adopted, and 2 penalty clauses of the Mesa City Code. Adopting the 2018 International Plumbing Code by reference, adopting amendments to certain provisions in the 2018 International Plumbing Code, and adding a new Title 4, Chapter 5, Sections 1 and 2. Item 8H, Act on Ordinance Repealing the Existing Title 4 Building Regulations, Chapter 6, Mesa Mechanical Code, Sections 1, International Mechanical Code adopted, and 2 penalty clauses of the Mesa City Code. Adopting the 2018 Mechanical Code by reference, adopting amendments to certain provisions in the 2018 International Mechanical Code, and adding a new Title 4, Chapter 6, Sections 1 and 2. Item 8I, Act on Ordinance Repealing the Existing Title 4 Building Regulations, Chapter 7, Mesa Fuel and Gas Code, Sections 1, International Fuel and Gas Code adopted, and 2 penalty clauses of the Mesa City Code. Adopting the 2018 International Fuel and Gas Code by reference, adopting amendments to certain provisions in the 2018 International Fuel and Gas Code, and adding a new Title 4, Chapter 7, Sections 1 and 2. Item 8J, Act on Ordinance Repealing the Existing Title 4 Building Regulations, Chapter 8, Mesa Existing Building Code, Sections 1, International Existing Building Code adopted, and 2 penalty clauses of the Mesa City Code. Adopting the 2018 International Existing Building Code by reference, adopting amendments to certain provisions in the 2018 International Existing Building Code, and adding a new Title 4, Chapter 8, Sections 1 and 2. Item 8K, Act on Ordinance Repealing the Existing Title 4 Building Regulations, Chapter 9, Mesa Energy Conservation Code, Sections 1, International Energy Conservation Code adopted, and 2 penalty clauses of the Mesa City Code. Adopting the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code by reference, adopting amendments to certain provisions in the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code, and adding a new Title 4, Chapter 9, Sections 1 and 2. Item 8L, Act on Ordinance Adopting the 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code by reference, adopting amendments to certain provisions in the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code, and adding a new Title 4, Chapter 9, Sections 1 and 2. Item 8L, Act on Ordinance Adopting the 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code by reference, adopting amendments to certain provisions in the 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code. Adding a new Title 4 Building Regulations, Chapter 10, Mesa Swimming Pool and Spa Code, Sections 1, Swimming Pool and Spy Code, Spa Code adopted, and 2 penalty clause. Item 8M, Act on Ordinance Repealing the Existing Title 7 Fire Regulations, Chapter 2, Sections 1 and 2 Fire Code of the Mesa City Code. Adopting the 2018 International Fire Code by reference, adopting amendments to certain provisions in the 2018 International Fire Code, and adding a new Title 7, Chapter 2, Sections 1 and 2. Items 8C through 8M would take effect February 10th, 2019. Mayor and council members, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Christopher. I'm looking forward to the social media posts about our spy code. You do a great job, Kevin. Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. Please cast your votes. Passes unanimously. As I indicated, we do have three items that were removed from the consent agenda, the first being item 5B. I will read it so we know what we're talking about. Item 5B is endorsing the creation of the Evergreen Irrigation Water Delivery District that is generally bounded by West 8th Street on the north, West University Drive on the south, North Grand on the west, and North Drew Street on the east. The formation of an irrigation district allows the district to make improvements and perform maintenance and operations of their irrigation system. Final designation of the district is determined by the AmeriCopa County Board of Supervisors. I know there's a lot of folks here to talk on this. We do have several cards from people supporting the action. They've asked not to speak, though. But I will note for the record that Tom Lovell, Bruce Cummings, Peter Vargas, John Tingler, Barbara Bingham, Chris Tipsherany, and Jane Cummins have turned in cards expressing support for the action, but not indicating that they have a desire to speak. I do have four cards from individuals who do wish to speak. So I'll state your name. Please come up to the podium. You'll have three minutes to share with us what you'd like us to know about this agenda item. The first is Rick Murphy.
Thank you.
Welcome.
In 2004, I have lived in the neighborhood since 89. In 2004, I was appointed by a majority of the neighborhood as leader of the irrigation group, collected money from 95% of the people totaling over $10,000, initiated $8,000 worth of repairs. The money continued to be used up until recently, when it ran out. A few people started to help and initiate, prepare, and organize it. Having been appointed by them, I have never been informed that they were gonna do this other than the last meeting. I have 27 signatures here of people who do not want it. There is enough irrigation law by the Arizona Revised Statutes to control it. You are under a land contract on irrigation when you bought your land to do it and maintain your property. And putting it into a tax base is not necessary, only if you don't want to bother doing any work to collect the money and get the work done, which I have been doing for 14 years with no problem.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Janine Sander.
Hello. My name's Janine Sander. I live at 460 North McDonald's, and I purchased this home 15 months ago, moving into Evergreen Historic District, largely moving there for the flood irrigation access and because of the neighborhood character the area provides. There is a definite lack of organization for prearranged process to fix issues with the irrigation currently. There also seems to be a very small group of people willing to donate into the current fund, while everyone in the neighborhood enjoys the benefits of the system. A few people should not have to bear the burden of many. I was heavily involved in an issue we had this summer with a neighbor who opted not to take irrigation, but maintained a broken pipe on their property for years. Their inability to fix the pipe and/or work with neighbors put great strain on our neighborhood irrigation system. They could not or did not want to pay for it, as they did not use the irrigation. Police officers, even when showed the water law that exists, seem to not understand nor take it seriously. I spent several days of my own time at the police department in person, left several messages with officers and their superiors, trying to figure out what was going on and how they were gonna assist us. We didn't see any forward motion until Councilman Freeman got involved. At that point, the pipe was fixed, and that was only after we missed multiple irrigation runs. I see this as the future of this neighborhood, the irrigation system itself, because really, this area is what it is, because it is so unique and uncommon. The pipes are old. They are very old. The system that existed 150 years ago, 40 years ago, is not gonna fix what is currently going wrong with the system now. I truly feel that we need to come together, collect money as a collective, have a set system in place, so that we don't have to call the cops on our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Scannellberry.
Mayor, council, how you doing? Here again. So I've been living on that property in this district for 25 years. One of the first people I met was Mr. Rick Murphy to help organize us digging up a pipe and repairing a pipe. We've taken care of our neighborhood over the years, and there are times, like the last lady explained, where we had people that didn't cooperate, and it was resolved with the existing laws. I have, obviously, I'm very opposed to this. I'm the largest landholder in the neighborhood. I will have the largest increase in tax. This is a way to force us to pay. One of my other big concerns is one of the people drafting this as a city employee. If this fails, the city has an opportunity to grab this as another irrigation district. The irrigation districts are almost three times as expensive, I'm sorry, 12 times as expensive, if it's City of Mesa. So I'm totally opposed. I'm willing to work with my neighbors. I'm willing to collect money. I'm willing to do that, but I don't want another tax base to be forced to pay and to lose our water rights that we've purchased. That was our expectation, is that wouldn't be tramped on, and now it has the ability to. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Heather Scannellberry.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just echo what my neighbor, Rick Murphy, said, and my husband, Rob, said. One of my, I have a few major concerns about it. We are the largest shareholder in that, in the district that's being proposed. We have over 330 feet of irrigation pipe that actually services our neighbors, you know, that surround our property there. So some of the wording in the statute really concerns me. The big word is eminent domain. This, forming this district gives eminent domain power to just three individuals. If you want to talk about having problems with your neighbors, I mean, that's one of the worst conditions, I would say, of bringing one of these up. I consider you guys to be our, I know this ultimately goes to the county board supervisors, but you're our first line of defense, and I would hope that you would take that opportunity to support us. We just became aware of this part of the process just a few days ago, so we haven't had ample opportunity to make our other neighbors aware that this process has actually formally begun. We've talked about it loosely in the neighborhood for about the last year. It's been spoken of, with the neighbors trying to organize knowingly that there's opposition to it. So I was disappointed to see that this process had actually formally started, and there was no notice given. They've given notes and things about meetings within the neighborhood, but not that this was actually on the council agenda. So this taxes many of our neighbors that don't use irrigation. It can cause charges and assessments, as well as the tax. And a lot of neighbors don't use this irrigation system at all. So if we had ample time to speak to all of our neighbors, I think that we are largely in the majority of being opposed to this IWDD being formed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. William Gosny.
We live at 656 North McDonald's. Couple of things has been mentioned. First one I would like to address is the eminent domain. The eminent domain is no different than the utility line or the phone line that runs across an easement. The only thing that the district would have is the ability to access someone's property upon notification to do repairs. We're not taking land away from anybody. We're not creating new easements. Number two, the age of the system has been mentioned. It is getting old. We have had to, on an annual basis, continue to do repairs. Some of the people who spoke earlier actually have talked to us about needing repairs to pipes on their property, and wanting us, as a neighborhood, to be involved in that. By forming this association, it is an organized, directed manner of maintaining a system that's just getting older and older by the day. If you approve us to proceed, it is only the beginning of a process. We have to hold public meetings. We have to get an assessment with SRP of the whole system. We're holding a meeting at the public library to inform everyone. The comment about people not knowing, we've been talking about this for a year and a half or two years. SRP has been sending out letters to every property owner, whether they live on the property or they're out of state. We have been trying to communicate with as many of the neighbors and involve as many neighbors as we can. If we proceed with this formation of a district, ultimately, there will be a vote, where every property owner has the right to vote, and either we get a majority or we don't. If we don't get a majority, obviously, there's no district. If a majority of the people with the water rights on their land want the district... If a majority of the people with the water rights on their land want the district, then it makes sense. And lastly, I would say it is a historic area. It needs to be maintained. And if it's not, if the system's not maintained, then the big old trees are going to be dying, you know, and on and on and on. People have been buying houses in that area because of the way the neighborhood looks. And in order to maintain that, the, and one last thing, the assessment, property assessment according to SRP, we're looking at maybe $60 a year per acre. If you live on a quarter of an acre, you're looking at $25 an annual assessment. So, we're not trying to take anything away from anybody, and we're not trying to grab power or eminent domain. We're trying to maintain an existing aging system.
Thank you, Mr. Gosny.
Sure.
All right. Council, what's your pleasure? I think I understand the issues here, but would it be, Mr. Freeman, I know you've been involved in this situation.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I think it's important to know what our legal process in this is and how the process works, but I know from my understanding, the meeting with SRP and neighborhoods over this, that it takes over 50% of the landowners and then over 50% of the, I'll say, the parcel owners and the landowners, 50% of each, to proceed with this. So, if they haven't had the vote, they need to have the vote. And I don't, Mr. Smith, is there anything I'm missing on that, or Carrie, or that kind of covers it? So, this allows the district to move forward in the process, and yes, it does tax each parcel owner a certain amount of money, but then it's put into a special district to allow them to repair the system. So, as I've said in the past, I appreciate neighbors working with each other, and I would move forward in recommending this and make the motion to do that.
Thank you. Yes, we have a motion made by Mr. Freeman. We'll see if there's a second.
Have some questions if I can before we proceed.
Yes, I just want to make sure we make a note that we have a motion. Did you push the button, Mr. Freeman? Thank you. Okay. We'll wait and see if we get a second. Mr. Whitaker.
So, I just want to prefix this by saying I'm completely ignorant to the irrigation districts because I don't live in one, but there's a couple of questions that I had after listening to the public speak. On the issue of eminent domain, I'm assuming that's simply for the purposes of easements. Is that correct? The eminent domain power?
So, Mayor and Councilmember Whitaker, I don't know if it's limited. I'd have to reread the statute, but the eminent domain for any governmental entity is limited to a public purpose and for compensation. So, whether it's limited to an easement or a land right, a fee right, I don't know if that statute actually places that limitation.
Okay. And how many homeowners or properties are affected by this new district? Is that accurate? Does somebody from staff look it up?
This doesn't say how many parcels.
Okay. And the other thing, I had a question, and this is a publicly elected board based on these properties. Is that correct?
I'm sorry. Can you state the question one more time?
Is it a publicly elected board based on the homeowners that live within this district, I'm assuming, based on acreage or one house, one vote?
The way I understand it, the vote is based on the amount of acreage you own. So, if you own one acre, you get one vote. If you have a half an acre, you have a half a vote. That's in the voting process. But this is the formation, the Irrigation Water Delivery District, and so each homeowner is taxed based on the size of their parcel, and then that money's set aside in a special box or area so that they can utilize that to repair anything in their system.
And it's just specific to that district, right?
Just each irrigation district sets up their own. So, there's boundary, like our council districts.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any other questions regarding this? We have a motion made by Mr. Freeman. I will go ahead, for the purpose of moving this forward to vote, I'll go ahead and second it. I am familiar with the neighborhood. I grew up here as well. I opened the floodgates on these, in this neighborhood many times as a, growing up there. My understanding of, our action tonight is not going to create this district. This is going to move it forward so that after consideration by the county supervisors, a vote can take place in the neighborhood. I note that there's nine different property owners that have indicated support for moving forward. I understand the two households that came and expressed their concerns, but to me, I think it's, I understand that there's at least this amount of community support for going forward. Ultimately, nothing will happen unless there's a majority of the property owners that want to proceed. So, this, and as I understand the way these operate, if the eminent domain, scary phrase, is really just attached to being able to go onto property to repair broken pipes that would prohibit the neighborhood from enjoying flood irrigation, which I think is one of the real assets of the Evergreen Historic District. The reason people, this is a very prized neighborhood. People moving to McDonald's and Grand and Robson are coming there for the large trees, and that's tied to this asset of having flood irrigation. So, I understand the passion that is going on in the neighborhoods on this issue. So, we have a motion and a second, Council. Please cast your vote. Unanimous in favor of Agenda Item 5B. Next, we have Agenda Item 5D. And we do have one request to speak. Agenda Item 5D is approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a purchase agreement and a development agreement with Chicanos Por La Causa Incorporated for the development of approximately two and a half acres of property, of which approximately 1.3 acres is city-owned, on the northwest corner of Country Club Drive and Main Street. The purchase and development agreements will facilitate the development of a mixed-use, transit-oriented development. The one card I have to speak on this is from Mr. Verl Farnsworth.
Mayor and Council had not planned to speak on this item, but after hearing your discussion downstairs, I think there needs to be some clarification before a vote is taken. If I understood correctly, we have city-owned property that's valued at $700,000 that's being proposed to be sold in this agreement for $400,000. Looking at the map that was presented, the city property is the peripheral or the outside, which is the most valuable of the whole property. The interior is not. This giveaway that seems to be taking place or seems to be the motivation, because there's lots of other reasons for that, seemed to contradict in a very broad way this explosion of interest that was supposed to have come to downtown in the area because of ASU. This is, this giveaway contradicts that philosophy completely. So, my question is, is when is the citizen taxpayer ever going to be able to be the first in consideration for the values of their assets? Or are we going to keep being asked to subsidize the corporate welfare programs that seem to be popular with a few over, I would think, the voice of the whole? It always looks good when somebody else is spending money that doesn't belong to them, and there's not a lot of accountability. But I want you to reassess this one because I don't think the appraisals and the value, when more than half of the property considered belongs to the citizens of Mesa and is going to get less than half the consideration of the appraised value. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farnsworth. Council, is there discussion or comments on this item? I will note that there was some discussion on this item downstairs among Council. I'll summarize it quickly, but, well, I'll give you my spin on it. This is the intersection of Country Club and Main Street. It's one of the traditional eyesores that's identified every few years when the newspaper or someone else talks about things they don't like to see in the City of Mesa. It has sat as a monument to our failure to move forward for over 20 years when there was an effort to develop this property previously. The city owns part of the property, as do a couple of other owners. That, the non-city-owned property has been assembled by the developer, and the question is now if the city will go forward to help this develop, help assemble the property for this to be a gateway development into our downtown. There has been economic impact studies done on this that have established that the city, direct revenue to the city over the next 25 years will be $5 million. The indirect impact to the city over that period of time will be $207 million. The permit and impact fees on this piece of property for the initial construction, $860,000, and the construction sales tax on the property is $340,000. None of those figures include any revenue coming to the city when we have 198 units that become city utility customers. So, the economic return on this investment is pretty obvious. So, I think it would be a mistake to characterize this as something that where the city is taking some sort of a losing position going forward financially. So, that kind of summarizes the discussion that we had downstairs on this piece of property. Council, is there a motion to go forward on this? Thank you. The motion's been made by Mr. Glover, seconded by Mr. Heredia. Please cast your vote. The motion passes six ayes with Mr. Whitaker voting nay. The next item on our agenda is Item 5E. This is authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute necessary documents with MC Hotel Riverview LLC for the sale of approximately 12,000 square feet of city-owned property located at the northeast corner of Paseo, Lago Vista, and Sheffield Avenues, and to enter into a development agreement for the site, for the, on the site, for the site for the construction of a hotel and retail restaurant space. We do have three cards that wish to speak on this. The first is Mr. Verl Farnsworth.
Again, thank you. Again, the consideration is why is the City of Mesa considering, accepting an offer to sell for less than appraised value, considering the market that we're in right now, when there's not a homeowner in this city that would sell for less than the appraised value of their property? Well, we're not happy about that. This property has been appraised for $360,000, is being offered for $300,000 to a business that has nowhere else to turn to get the land that they need to expand their business. That is, the purpose of an appraisal is to determine the value in today's market. The appraisal speaks for itself. The terms of the buyback reflect no risk to the buyer and transfers all of the risk for the project to the citizens of Mesa. No one should expect to get a full refund when they do not meet the terms of an agreement. No one should expect to get bailed out because they didn't plan effectively enough for a project to be successful. That is exactly what is happening in this agreement. The citizens of Mesa reject this thinking and ask that this deal stand on its own two feet and not on the backs of us citizens. The citizens, the City of Mesa is not in the hotel or in the hotel building business. Don't go there. When Mr. Brady said previous, this, last year, "We don't go into these agreements thinking about making a profit," I guess he meant that, at least when it comes to spending somebody else's money and not his own. Mr. Giles, Mayor Giles, you at the same meeting mentioned this. The only time we go to the taxpayer is when we need more money. How many more times do you think you're going to get away with that position? This council just asked for a tax increase from the citizens of this community, and you got it because you said you didn't have enough money to pay your bills, and now you're throwing away another $60,000 that belongs to them, maybe putting tens of thousands at risk, maybe millions of dollars to complete an unfinished project. Please, let these projects stand on their own and stop this corporate welfare.
Next, Robert Scannellberry.
Hi again. Verl did awesome. There isn't that much more to say, other than I have the same concerns as him. It should be a fair shake. Anybody should be able to get that property at the fair market value. We shouldn't take a loss. I've said it on so many topics when I come to talk to you guys, it's not the role of our government. This isn't a role of what you guys are supposed to do. That's it. We should get our full money out of the property. It should be put out on the fair market. We shouldn't be given discounts, so it's just more corporate welfare for us and special interests. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scannellberry. I also have a card from Mr. Garcia. Mark Garcia indicating he does not wish to speak but expressing support for the project. This is another item that we had, I think, a very good discussion downstairs on, and a lot of the figures and staff shared a lot of the revenues and the math associated with this item. So, I guess we can recreate that discussion to some extent if you'd like to. Council, any additional questions or comments on this item? Yes, Mr. Whitaker.
So, there's a few issues that I have with this, and I echo what Verl said. I'm not a fan in corporate welfare. The property is worth $360,000. We should be selling it for $360,000, not $300,000. The appraisal takes into effect the parking issue already. It's pre-baked into that appraisal. So, this notion that it's worth less than the appraisal because of that, I don't find it to be valid. And further, I would say, if you look at downtown Tempe, there's plenty of retail space that has no parking lots. They use shared parking garages, and, you know, I can't imagine anybody that owned a piece of property in downtown Tempe would sell their property for less than what it's worth, just simply because it doesn't come with parking or that parking is an inconvenience. And the last thing that really bothers me is this whole argument of economic impact, and what does that actually mean, right? You could actually justify on any piece of land that the City of Mesa owns and any real estate transaction giving a discount to the buyer because they're going to build something that's going to generate some form of sales tax revenue, utility revenue in the future. Does this mean like every single property that we move forward with, we can justify giving price breaks to the buyers? And to some extent, you could justify building out the entire residential part of our city, and you could use the justification and say, "Well, future residents mean future water bills, future electric bills, future sales tax. Oh, and by the way, if we give them a break on these properties or give them the land for free so that they can build, that's more money in their pocket that they're going to come back and spend, which will generate more sales tax." So, this whole economic impact, you know, study is just bogus. I mean, like, where does the average person go to apply to the city for tax breaks or rent? I'm a small business owner. Is there an application I can fill out that says, you know, "Come and pay my rent for the next year because I provide jobs in the City of Mesa that generates future revenues?" And so, I'm voting against this, but I know I'm in the minority on this issue.
Thank you. Other comments? I will, I can't resist the temptation to summarize a little bit of what was said downstairs. This is a business decision on the part of the City of Mesa. We own a remnant piece of property that cannot be developed because it has no parking access and... and the highest and best use for this property is the construction of a hotel, which is a very lucrative development for the City of Mesa. We, we generate sales tax and bed tax when a hotel is, is developed, and it's the appropriate asset to be next to a ballpark and to bring additional tourism, tourism dollars to our city. So, landing this hotel is a real asset for the City of Mesa. Now, the appraised value for this, this, this 1,200 square feet is, I'm sorry, 12,000 squared feet is $360,000, and the sales price is $300,000, so the argument can be made that we're taking a, a loss of $60,000. However, as was discussed downstairs, if we allow for the development of this hotel, the bed tax alone annually that will come in on that development is nearly $200,000. So, very quickly, over the course of a few months, we will more than make up for the, the discount on the, the sales. And again, this is during the baseball season, there, there's a lot of complications tied to this property that make it very difficult. It's been, people have been trying to develop this property for many years now unsuccessfully. So, this is, the city is not in the business of owning remnant undevelopable property. When we have a lucrative offer to develop property that's going to generate tremendous amounts of sales tax and, and bed tax for the city, rather than looking at an empty piece of dirt, as we have been for the last many years, in my mind, this is a fairly obvious direction to go.
Mayor, just quickly, to some comments that were made is, the city sold this property years ago, within five, three years ago, four years ago, $9 a square foot. We're selling it at $24 a square foot. I think we've done a pretty good job. We gave the Chicago Cubs, the Chicago Cubs, almost two years to develop this property at a price of $9 a square foot. They couldn't do it, and they're right across the street. So, we've tried to negotiate the best deal for the city, and the highest and best use is going to generate significant income even after the sale of the property for the life of this hotel.
Yeah. For all those reasons, I think it would be financially irresponsible to, to not go forward with this. We have a motion in favor and a second from Mr. Luna. All in favor, please cast your vote. The vote is six in favor and one nay, with Mr. Whitaker voting against. The next item on our agenda is Item 9, Items from Citizens Present. Ms. Mickelson, do we have any requests to speak?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
No vote.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.